I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note roll call, Jason.
All members present, A V. Coleman.
Okay. And we don't have any students or citizens of the month to honor. No special presentations. Board correspondence report.
Before we get to the budget, I'll just, there was a Supreme Court ruling that maybe, I don't know how it's going to affect us, but it will affect the DPI. Before the state superintendent in the Department of Public Instruction had, didn't have to submit any proposal administration rules to the governor, they could just do that. Now they have to submit it to the governor as required by all our state agencies. So I don't know how that's going to affect us too much, but it certainly will probably affect the DPI.
Well, at least Evers is certainly well aware of all the issues of the DPI.
Absolutely.
So that's a good situation.
So the good thing is, we have a budget.
Oh.
It was signed into law with several partial vetoes, which opened up some money to put into K-12 education to the tune of eighty-five million dollars more than what the legislator had put in. There is an increase for special education categorical aid, and an increase to state reimbursement to thirty percent by 2020. I mean, thirty percent isn't a lot, but.
For special education?
For special education.
Wow, that's a lot more. Didn't you say it was fifteen last year?
So, you know, it's getting, it's getting there. Yeah, so that'll help. They increased the funding for the school mental health. Big thing is the increase to the low revenue limit ceiling because we're a low-spending district. So two years ago it was at ninety-two hundred dollars per student, now it goes up to ninety-seven. And then in the second part of the MyAnV, it's going to go up to ten thousand per student.
That's significant.
Yes. Small districts like us and our surrounding neighbors that are low-revenue spending are going to come out very good. Districts like Washington Island, Gibraltar, and Sebastopol, they are probably going to lose about three hundred dollars per student in this new budget. One thing that the governor vetoed was the minimum aid provision. Because when he was the superintendent who had the DPI, that was one thing that he was adamant about getting. So nobody can really figure out just why he would have vetoed that. But that's been vetoed, so I don't know. So really, what's in, you know something?
That was a thousand dollars per student.
The minimum? Okay, it didn't say, it didn't say in the news, in the letter I have here. So what's in and what's out? The general aid has went up, per pupil aid went up. There's a supplemental per pupil aid, it's a new program. There's like two-point-eight million dollars in it this year, two-point-five in the next year, and they're going to divide that up, be distributed to all school districts. So what's, and Dave, you'll be happy about this, School Day Milk Funding Program went up. So that's a good thing. What's out? The Personal Computing Device Grant Program, grants for computers, you know, that's gone. The supplemental special education aid is gone. The Teach Training Grants, it was educational technology training for teachers and libraries, that's gone. The school performance improvement grants, schools that were put on that, on the list, the list. Basically, in, within the boundaries of Milwaukee Public Schools especially, and, or anywhere around the state, if you showed improvement, you would have got a grant. That's, that's gone. So that's kind of where he got the money to put into, into K-12 education because he couldn't add to the money already allocated. So he just kind of allocated it differently. And then, just, everybody should be aware that one of the parochial schools in town is offering special needs scholarship programs. Just, if you're listening, be aware that, yes, it is a, they get a state aid payment from the, from the state, but that state aid payment comes directly from, from your public school system. And then if there are any services that they cannot provide, then the public school also has to provide that. And so if that state aid payment, be aware that if that state payment goes out to that parochial school, the district can tax you again for that, so it's a, it's a double bubble, so.
I think that's very helpful to always clarify that.
Yes.
Questions or comments? Okay, we'll keep moving. Board Cease Report, Mick.
I don't really have too much. Jeff is investigating the possibility of an online academy where each district, it would be your own academy, so you would keep your own kids. He's, just, just, so ours would be called like the Algoma Online Academy. It's just, he's investigating that.
So we would pay a subscription service to run?
I have no idea of the particulars yet. He just kind of mentioned it out there.
So it would be an alternative to another virtual school?
Yes.
Okay.
But we would be able to keep, we would keep our own kids.
Right.
We wouldn't lose that funding. He also is looking into a, which I think is kind of neat, it's a Lambeau Field Hall of Fame Teachers' Night. So I thought that would be kind of interesting. I don't know anything about that, except that that's what he's looking into, so I'm sure I'll learn more.
Yeah.
Sure you will.
Okay. Questions or comments for Mick? Okay, we'll keep going. There are no citizens delegations to be heard, no student representative report. I tell you, summer meetings are, move, move along quickly. My announcements, again, just re-promoting the August first golf outing, which is our primary source of funding for Algoma Area Education Foundation scholarships. That is a Thursday this year, and it's at the Royal Scott. And so we sponsored a hole, if anybody has not paid, please pay up. And if there are other sponsors or people who want to donate for raffle prizes or anything like that, we would certainly welcome anything, and of course, golfers.
Where do they bring their things that they want to donate?
They can bring them here.
Bring them to the school.
I'll take care of it.
All right, and then the other thing is, I don't know if you, does everybody get this mailing? Okay, so if you notice, September twenty-fifth, it's back at the Rock Garden again. And so September twenty-fifth is our region meeting, so try and keep that date clear if you can. All right, moving on to administration reports.
Wellness Center update, the Kid Strength Camp that Zach offered was going to happen on, once again, this time for six weeks. Classroom's all the way to the week before the start of school. On-time events, Wellness Center was the host site to multi, multiple events this month. The Center hosted the blood drive and lifeline screening, both have a solid turnout. This week, the Center will have events, games, and tables set up for Algoma's night out. Marcus Baim will be camp, will be coming in and doing a talk geared towards our senior population. Talk will be August first, day of the golf outing, is geared towards low back, hip, and knee health, and strengthening exercise, pain management in those areas, and developing an exercise plan for those joints. And then lastly, just said that the reoccurring theme for the summer is maintaining community engagement because it's so nice outside, lots of people stay outside.
Right.
So he's always working on that. Nothing for the PAC. My staffing update, going pretty well, obviously, just like I said last month, trying to find certain positions is really difficult because there are like no applicants. So I actually had a long conversation with a student that's going out west on the Leadership Through High Adventure program this, later this week, and just about all the different things that we might try to do to make sure that our students get the coursework that they need and have work towards. So I'm sure it'll be a combination of many things in order to fill that. And then, summer project progress, we're still waiting for the contractor to get here on the tennis courts, but everything else is going along quite nicely, I think. The buildings inside have, you know, you go upstairs here, it's everything shiny and new. I gave a tour to the class, graduating class of seventy-six on Saturday. So what I thought was going to be a short twenty-minute tour was about two and a half hours long.
Well, they showed interest.
It was really fun, though, because they had, there's some great people there, great stories from all over the country. One that I thought was really interesting is we, we actually went outside, we looked at Penny's Garden, and then we came back in through Tech Ed, and by the door were the WS Packaging machines. And one of the attendees said that in nineteen-seventy-six is the first time they had a partnership with the label, I would assume at that time. And they actually put a small press up here at the high school. And he then went on to say, he said, "That's how I got started." He's thirty-seven or thirty-eight years in the printing industry, and he's an executive for Quad Graphics. So I was just like, that's pretty awesome. So he was like looking at it, and he's like, "I know everything about that machine." Like he was over there checking it all out, and it was, it was just super fun.
Yeah.
Also got to talk a little bit about how education has changed. And what services we provide for students now, some of the struggles that we have, all the different kind of variables that we struggle throughout the year. And so, it was, it was a good time because there are some people that are, I recognize them from around town, so they haven't really gone anywhere, but then there are others that are, you know, from Virginia.
So they must have had some kind of an alumni event?
Yeah, their, fortyth class reunion was Saturday night, Saturday morning.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it was, I really enjoyed it, actually. It was fun to talk to them, and I think they were, at the end, I think they were like, they were just really proud of what the school district has been able to do and provide. Certainly, the people that are around here recognize that, but some of them are completely blown away at all the different stuff that we offer because of the one teacher teaches at a technical high school, I believe in Virginia, and she's like, "We don't even have this stuff." So like, that's their specialized approach there, and all the others kind of prep schools kind of feed into that. So it was just fun to hear, and yeah, so it was a good Saturday morning.
Yeah. Questions or comments for Nick? Okay, we'll move on to you, Katie.
All right, I will add to what Nick was saying. I did a class reunion tour also this summer at the end of June, it was a class of sixty-four. So we walked through the elementary school, and it was kind of the same thing. It ended up being like an hour and a half, and they just wanted to look around, they found their lockers, they... You know, I feel like, I think I walked away learning more from them than they did by seeing it, but they, they had some really funny stories, really, really funny stories.
I think every single person went to their locker. And one lady's like, "I know the cop." And then she was like, "That's a different style lock, I remember."
Like the smallest things, yeah.
I'm like, "How do you remember that?"
Told some stories of some teachers and...
Yes?
Katie had a really old group that for that, that was fifty-five-year reunion.
They were a fun bunch.
Yeah, and I'm sure they enjoyed the changes with the comments room and, and that, so.
Oh, yeah, it was a good time. All right, so Summer Jump Start is well underway, we're in our second week. We have seventeen students who are participating in that, and that's just kind of like a little summer boost in the areas of reading and math. Three hours, Monday through Thursday in the morning, they do a snack. Really just kind of trying to focus on, you know, keeping reading and math fun, engaging, giving students some choice in that, also working with them on some specific skills that they have shown that they needed some extra practice with. So that's going well. We had a handful of teachers, about eight teachers, attend a literacy workshop last week. Really especially good for our newer teachers who were not with the district when we did our initial literacy workshop, so it was a good chance to kind of meet in the middle, meet in the middle, learned a lot of new things. Some things we want to take some action steps with moving into the next year, but a good experience for all. I'm happy to share that the elementary school received the Bronze Level Recognition from the Wisconsin RTI Center, which is, they work with all the different CISA's, they work with DPI, and they really work on like behavior interventions, you've heard me talk about PBIS. But we achieved Bronze Level for our one year of full implementation, and then those levels increase as we maintain implementation throughout the year, so that was something exciting.
And what is RTI?
Response to Intervention.
Ah, Response to Intervention.
Yeah. So kind of that multi-level system, what we do for students who are, who are, you know, are working above, what do we do for those who are struggling in certain areas and kind of everything in between, so. And then lastly, we are having quite a bit of a turnover in our PTS. Two of our PTS members, their, their youngest children are now moving on to the middle school and high school, so they will no longer be with the group. So Jenny Finnandale and Jamie Young, both of their sons are moving up, so they have kind of passed the torch on to others. A huge thank you to them, they were definitely the driving force behind the Elementary Playground Project over the last three years. So their work definitely is appreciated and does not go unnoticed. We have quite a few, we have a handful of parents who are stepping up and kind of filling in. We actually, at our last meeting, we also had two staff members as well, so definitely some positive things in the works with that, so.
Great. Questions or comments? Okay, Business Managers Finance Bulletin Report, Jason.
School in July is pretty simple, there's not much change until everything gets finalized, till we update our budgets, not going to stop for DPI, so we completed our audit, so I'll get that fixed, so, so we have that, everything's fine. Change is our July aid. So we, last year, our projected nineteen-twenty, I will receive an increase of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. So that's good news. Doesn't mean we actually get that increase, it's just the difference between who pays in the top. So the revenue in the worksheet, as you all know, actually determines the amount of money we're going to get. This is just saying, we're going to get an increase from the state, so the state, so the state's going to pay a higher portion than it did last year. That's all I have.
Helps the taxpayers.
One thing that I, I came up with my goal is, up on top is the breakdown of how our aid payment is determined. As you see, our, our aid payment is generally, it will be four million, seven hundred and... Or, four hundred, oh, yeah, four million, seven hundred and forty-five, one. However, we equalize aid deduction of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars in Milwaukee. Based on our eligibility. To serve interest and see how that all comes. That is all I have.
Okay.
I have a question, not on this report, but on the statement report. The second item that was sent out for batteries plus twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
You're talking about the bills?
Yep.
Oh, okay, yep. So that is our lights for the year. So these LED lights, these LED light panels that are up there, that's just light panels.
So that's all light panels, so we've been redoing the whole, right, okay, that makes sense now.
So I think we got, this year, we got four hundred and, four hundred and twelve, some of that.
They're everywhere.
Yeah.
They're big piles of them, and then they come, they're all wrapped up.
Saving a ton of money on energy. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Special Ed Report, Pathfinder Update, Katie.
We have an interview tomorrow for Pathfinder. It's full on the one, I kind of did a little phone interview a couple of weeks ago. I need some very interested, regular friend of mine in his own learning, so bringing a couple of kids and myself and I could be interviewing some leads around for that. Our library partnership will be continuing, the young adult library in there kind of took over halfway through the year last year. And enjoy doing the book club with our kids, so she is excited, she's on top of it. She already sent me a timeline and all the books they're reading, so I'm excited to continue that. It just gets our kids reading, it gets a different face into the building, so that's always really positive for them. In Special Ed, all positions are filled at this point, which is huge, it's July, I'm very excited about that. The only other thing I have is that we're going to put together a team for the Down Central March in August, which is in Green Bay. I think a bunch of the Wolf Den kids are going to join and support one of their buddies that's in Wolf Den, so anybody's interested, just let me know, but we should have a pretty good-sized team together for...
And what date is that, do you know?
It's August seventeenth.
Okay.
It's just a mile walk because they have a lot of participants with special needs, it'd be a bit shorter instead of a five-day, so.
Okay. Questions or comments for Katie? That's very exciting news about your positions being filled, and good luck tomorrow.
Yeah, great.
Sorry.
I don't want to jinx us now, sorry.
Suddenly all this napping is going on. All right. Are you going to be giving the Algoma?
So you should have a packet that says in the past thirty days. Phil's report here is pretty lengthy, so bear with me. But the first thing that she wanted to talk about is that the last thirty days, we have been contacted by Theta Care, United Way of Door County, Denmark Schools, Neighborhood Partners Powered by Goodwill, Rise Together, Connects with Youth to Break the Silence of Drug and Outvalues, House of Hope, Resources for People Who Face Homelessness, St. Norbert College, Tamerik Institute from Canada, Concordia University, Mechanicsburg High School in Ohio. We've been featured on PBS, Green Bay Press Gazette, Nickelade Bank, Tall Ships, Ninety-one Point One, The Avenue, and US Venture. And we have also been recognized by the CEO of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, Richard Wesser, and you can see our work there. Upcoming, we are planning a symposium for spring of 2020 for others to come and learn, fee will be collected.
Yes.
I think she put like barbed like this on it. Thanks to Mr. Durst back there and Mr. Ranklin as the lead staff change agent. Be creating a podcast studio with three initial prongs of Live Algoma Focus, The Flipped Classroom, Thinking Differently About the Classroom, Focus Fridays. We've been doing that for quite some time now, and building leadership capacity, and then Change Agents, Community Improvement, and the Seven Dimensions. Obviously focusing on our youth for that one. And some speakers from the Algoma Community Wellness Center can share information on wellness topics, led by our youth, and Mr. Ranklin is going to direct that, so. I know they spent a lot of time talking about it and discussing it the other day, so.
Oh, that's great.
I think it's all positive, right, Mr. Durst? The SOW sustaining our Wolves Garden, led by Mrs. Lumberger and Youth Change Agent Jenny Farley, have applied for community give-back dollars and have been awarded money to purchase a hydroponics unit. This will produce food for the high school salad bar as well as food for Wolf Den. And I heard Patty talking about it today, that she's pretty confident that they'll be able to provide almost all of that.
Really, so that will be in the new building?
Yep, that'll be in that area, greenhouse area.
Well, what a learning opportunity, too.
And then, East Shore Clients will help to plant and harvest as part of our collaboration through the My Community Initiative. Check out, she said we have redesigned our logo, see handout for image. The logo connects to our globe on the sign outside of the high school, aligning to our fifth district goal, community and world connections. And we are also redesigning our website, soon to be connected to the school's website. Check it out at livealgoma.org. This is made, sustained, and improved by Youth Change Agents or Live Algoma Activation Team Leads. Lots of good stuff happening.
I was going to say, definitely. Okay, we didn't have any committees meet this month, did we?
We did not. I do, Dave has asked me a couple times of having kind of a walkthrough. Am I saying that right, Dave, or just maybe a drive around of all the district properties?
For the buildings and grounds?
Yep, so that they can walk and talk or whatever with Steve and Tim and Paul if they would like. So I don't know if there is a day of the week that works better for everyone, doesn't matter to me.
So Dave, that's you as chair, Pat and John. Do you have any preference, Dave, as far as when to do that drive around? Did we lose him?
Is it there?
Dave, did we lose you?
No, I said if we could, if we could do it like between eleven and one o'clock someday.
Oh, yeah, that's totally fine, but do you have a day of the week that works better for you, Dave?
Usually Tuesday or Wednesday.
Do you want to say something now?
Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
All right, so.
I can get back to the group with that, give Pat a call. Pat and John are on that with me, right?
Yep, I am.
Yep.
Anytime or any day works for me, Dave.
Okay, what about you, John?
Wednesdays look better.
Do you want to, do you want to pick a date, John? You might have the most complicated calendar.
Let's try for the twenty-eighth.
July?
July.
July.
Would that work for you? Oh, yeah, the twenty-eighth is a Sunday.
Hold on. Hold on, let me go back.
Come on, John, quit trying to impress us now that you want to work on Sunday, okay?
How about the thirty-first?
Sounds okay.
That should work.
The thirty-first at, starting at eleven?
What day of the week is that, Wednesday?
That's a Wednesday.
I'll come and get you, Dave, okay?
Pardon?
I said I will come and get you.
Nick will come and get you.
Okay, at eleven o'clock.
Yep.
Eleven o'clock, it is.
If you guys want to be here, eleven fifteen or something.
Okay. Moving on to other specific items for discussion.
I would like to call a student safety committee meeting.
Okay. That would be you, Ann, and Mick.
So maybe you should be the one to choose.
Well, my schedule isn't as open as everybody else, so.
Right.
It would have to be after five, four-thirty at the earliest. Were you looking at in July, or?
Yeah, well, I guess sooner the better would be, whatever works.
Okay, well, I mean, I can, as long as it's after.
What are we, what are we looking at, Madam President?
Safety Committee is trying to determine a date for a meeting.
Okay, I'm not on that.
You are not, so you don't have to worry about that one.
Any day is good, as long as it's after four-thirty.
Well, next week, Thursday is out because it's the golf outing, so preferably earlier.
Is it, is it the?
The Tuesday, the thirtieth, does that work? Monday?
It's fine for me.
I will be gone then, I'll be gone then.
So you're going to be gone?
Yeah, maybe.
What about this week?
How about twenty-ninth, Monday?
Okay.
Twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Monday, next Monday.
That would work.
At like five? Did you want to give yourself a little more leeway, Mick, or make it at five?
Um, no, four-thirty should be good.
Four-thirty, okay. And meet in.
Give or take five minutes.
Your office, or, okay.
Okay, twenty-ninth.
All right. All right, we'll move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mick, second by Joanne. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills presented to us.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Pat, second by John. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Co-Curricular Code Handbook as presented.
Also move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Second by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, John.
There is. Um, we're doing the co-curricular code. What I'd like to ask the administration to do is every place where you have an acronym, that you spell out what it is before you use it. You have things like, I recognize that FFA is Future Farmers of America, but I would like to have that someplace, since this can become a legal document. Uh, SAD, there are twenty-seven definitions for the acronym for POPS, um, and FBLA, I assume is Future Business Leaders of America. But let's, let's make sure that there's no question about what that acronym means. Also, you did a good job with the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association of the Responsibilities, and then you had the acronym as using the periods. It's inconsistent in, in its use in the code, where you just put WIA with no periods. So... Um, let me see. The abbreviation AD is confusing. We have it for athletic director, activity director. Are those synonymous terms? Um, and when do we use which?
Isn't the AD, isn't it all in one? Isn't it, the activity director includes the athletic director?
Well, that's what everybody moved to. It used to be athletics, and then they moved to activities.
But that goes along with your defining.
Yeah, I just, just make sure that we are, we are clear in what we are stating. AODA, I assume, is alcohol or drug abuse. Uh, let's have that spelled out somewhere, too. You did a good job of, uh, performance-enhancing substances with PES, so, uh, there's just some inconsistencies I'd like to see, uh, cleaned up a bit. And with those, with that change, with that cleanup, you know, I think it should, uh, we can...
Yeah, it's just clarifications of content, not change of content.
And I have similar things for the coaches thing, but, you know, the same, essentially the same things, I think, with one thing, with, uh, LEP being, uh, limited English proficiency. We get into jargon all the time, and we have to make sure that when we put something out there for everybody to read, that we define what our terms are, we define what our acronyms that we're using.
I think that is excellent input. I have a motion and a second.
I would recommend that we amend the motion to include the, um, cited changes.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, it is.
All right. With the amended motion and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I need a motion to approve the coaches' advisors' handbook as presented.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Same comments as before.
Yes, with the amended.
We'll have to amend the motion.
Yes.
To include that.
Yes.
The changes.
So again, with the amendment?
So move, so move with the amendments.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
All right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the milk bid as presented.
I shall move.
Made by Dave.
I'll second.
And seconded by John. Questions or discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Did I hear you, Dave?
Pardon?
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Okay, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bread bid as presented.
So move.
Motion made by Mick. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for the twenty nineteen, twenty school year.
So move.
Motion made by Pat. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Request for future agenda items. Hearing none, we'll move on. I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five subsections.
President?
Yes.
On future agenda items, uh, I would just like a report if we got any, um, interest in the FFA with Kiwani next year.
Okay, we'll get that on the agenda. All right, okay. Um, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five subsections. One CE FNI for the Purpose of Personnel Matters, Hires, Staffing, Resignations.
So move.
Motion made by John. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pat. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
I also say yes.